Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly. Man.
He is absent.
Man? Sorry?
He was making reference to Raj.
Right.
Yes, but I'm present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Perris.
Here.
And then I'd like to do the roll call for the Housing Authority.
Yes.
Can we excuse Molly first?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Can I just do it by decree?
Yes.
You could if you were Henry, but...
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Housing Authority?
Housing Authority Member Harvey.
Present.
Man.
Present.
Vice Chair Crist.
Present.
Chair Zetto. We have a quorum.
Okay, Kitty's in San Francisco doing depositions. So...
Do we not need to make a motion for Kitty too? So I'll make that motion.
Second. Excuse me.
You're due the Housing Authority not...
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed unanimously.
Okay, and the invocation tonight will be Pastor John Metters from Christian Life Assembly. Bishop, you want to do the invocation?
I'm honored to do this, Mr. Mayor.
My faith has been challenged.
Listen, it is a great joy to be here and also I'd like to say, as I always say, that it is an honor to speak to the Lord on our behalf and I thank you all for what you do. Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for a city who is not afraid to honor and glorify your name. We thank you for the city council. Each of them, in their own way, are not afraid to acknowledge your name. Thank you for our staff and everyone who causes this city to move in such a great and positive way. Now, Master, we recognize that there's a lot of things going on in the world today and people are being put in jail and strange and doing crazy things in our cities. But our city council, we thank you that you've blessed us with a wonderful city council. And our mayor, we thank you for it. Bless us now and give them wisdom on how to carry out this business tonight. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
We've got Boy Scouts. Who wants to do the Pledge of Allegiance? Good evening. What's your names?
I'm Brian.
Thank you for coming down and doing this.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Hey, do they get a merit badge for that? We have the tent revival committee.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager, and all of you, and Vice Mayor and City Council and our Deputy Mayors, and thank you all so much for allowing us to be in your presence. Back in, I think it was May the 18th, 19th, and 20th, you all allowed us to use the East Side Park for the purpose of a three-day tent revival. And we are so into not being just somebody who runs around and hand out Bibles and just pray for people and that's all. We really wish to change minds and get them to see that we have a city that is worth living in and is worth being a good citizen. And this vision was given to a young lady that's standing behind me who's going to make a presentation to you. And what we've come tonight to do is just to make a presentation to our mayor and our city manager and another young man just to say, "Thank you all so much for what you've done." And this vision was given to Pastor Thornton and we've gone to over thirty-something churches, including our Deputy Mayor and his church and all of us and these brothers here who are... Our churches have come together for the purpose of changing minds, not just Bibles, but changing minds to make our city better. And we certainly appreciate you all allowing us to do that. And to give you just a little bit and make a presentation, Pastor Tina Thornton.
I just come to say thank you so much for believing in the God-given gift, vision that he has given me. In the tent revival, we have seen lives changed. We've seen families restored with all race, creed, and color. And the vision was to bridge the gap in the Antelope Valley. And all the pastors and the organizations were able to come together for three days and let God have His way first and foremost with the people ministering to the whole man. We were able to feed people with hot lunches all three days. We were able to give them brand-new shoes and shoes and clothing as well all three days. We were able to help them the whole man all the way around, all three days. So I just come to say, "Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And thank you, City Manager and the whole council. Thank you so much for trusting in the vision that God has given me because it made a difference with the lives of the people. And I'm still getting calls and reports about what happened and lives were changed at the tent revival." So I appreciate that and I'm looking forward to doing it again next year. And also, I come on behalf of the committee, we come bearing gifts just to say, "Thank you so much." We have a gift for the mayor.
That's good.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you so much. That's your official T-shirts in, "Bridgeing the Gap in the Antelope Valley." We have a gift for the City Manager as well. Mark was again as well. Thank you so much. He came to the tent revival.
Yeah, I was just going to make mention.
He came.
He didn't take any clothes or any shoes?
Mark told me he almost got saved.
Our Deputy Mayor preached an awesome word and it was awesome. I mean, it was packed out every day, more than I would say for the whole three... For the whole three days, there were more than 2,000 people that were there round the clock. And it was just such a blessing. Then, I wanted to thank also Mr. Jason Johnson, who was there every day. He was the maintenance, the manager of maintenance and he made sure that we had our... The park was clean. He was there at 8:00. I was there at 8:00 every morning and he was there making sure everything was clean. He also brought out clothes and donated to the people, to the homeless. So I just have something for him as well. Who would I give it to? Rhonda. And telling him I said, "Thank you so much." So I just wanted to say thank you and I appreciate that. And it could not have been done without the help of the city of Lancaster. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say that, first of all, I'm Brother Perry, Antelope Valley Outreach. I just want to say that I was honored to be a part of the committee. I've seen a lot of lives changed. We helped a lot of people. And I'm looking forward to doing it again. And I want to thank you all for helping us make it happen. Because, as he said, it was over thirty churches and as our motto is, "Together we can." Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm in agreement. Thank you. Thank you.
That was a heck of a speech, John.
Not today, no point today. Mark said I was a little too loud.
Mark said everybody was loud.
Everybody was too loud. Everybody was loud.
Yeah, he's captain. They sent you by the speakers, too.
Thank you very much. We had a great time and we wish to do it again and we stand behind her 100%. You guys are awesome. Thank you.
We really appreciate this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. No, they didn't give you one. He, I think he's clubbed. Okay, we have...
I want to see him wear that shirt, though.
What?
Wear the shirt?
I'm gonna wear the shirt. What's wrong with that shirt? I like that shirt. I'll put it on right now.
Alright.
Okay, mosquito abatement update from, is it Sea Kratts?
Good evening.
Can you abate him while you're at it?
Should I do what?
No, it's...
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, thanks for having me here. It's good to be here again. I'm just going to update you. This is actually the beginning of our season, so I'll let you know a little bit about... I'll just go through our previous season. Our fiscal year starts July the 1st. So my report here will be from June 30th of '17 to the end of this year. Well, till now. We had, it was a very successful year last year. We, I had a lot of... My technicians were out in the field every day. And of course, we service each area within the boundaries. All the technicians have a route that they go. So they hit each area once a week, so we make sure that we hit all of the Antelope Valley. Our seasonal staff, they're licensed. And then we have the assistant vector control technicians also. So at the beginning of the 2017 season, we did a flyover, which we contract with a company that they fly over the Antelope Valley and they identify all of the areas within the Antelope Valley, within the neighborhoods that look like swimming pools. And that makes it easy for us to identify the pools that need to be taken care of. So out of the pools that they identified, there were 2,846 inspections. 1,104 of them were actual pools. And then we actually treated 606. And of that, 188 of those pools were new to our pool list. So we maintain a pool list. And once you're on our pool list, you stay on it until we're sure that you've either cleaned your pool, you've covered, you've filled your pool in, or you're maintaining it regularly. Every year, we go back because we have rains or sprinklers or things, water gets in the pool. So every year, we go back to those areas that may have been problem pools. We check them and make sure that they're being maintained. In addition to the regular routes, the staff responded to 108 mosquito standing water service requests and 177 mosquito samples. We send in 177 mosquito samples. So that consists of over 1,100 mosquitoes. Then we also, we did testing and eight were positive for West Nile virus. Within the district boundaries, we had 53 birds that were reported to the West Nile virus bird hotline. Four of those were viable for testing. And of those four, zero tested positive for West Nile virus. In all of the Antelope Valley, and so this includes areas not within our district boundaries, we had an additional 11 birds that were reported. Six were tested and two were positive. Our Sentinel Chicken program resulted in 512 tests. Twenty-five were positive for West Nile virus and two for St. Louis encephalitis. And there were nine human cases for West Nile virus. There were zero deaths.
That what?
Zero. Nine posi... or there were nine human cases for West Nile virus, but zero deaths. The district...
What about the recovery?
We don't, because we're not part of the HIPAA, we can only report the actual, the deaths. But in terms of their, the medical care that they receive, that's another agency. So they get the medical care, but we don't know what the outcome is other than that... And I believe of those, of the positives that we had, there were only two that actually had difficulties. Most of those were, we pick up a lot in blood tests. When people go to give blood, it will show whether they've had West Nile virus. So not everybody that has West Nile virus shows symptoms. In fact, it's 0.01% of those that get West Nile virus actually show symptoms. The district outreach consists of, consisted of seven press releases, sixty school presentations, four radio interviews, and with the Catholic Leche. So we are reaching out to our Hispanic community. The thirty, we had thirty-second radio spots twice daily for six months, talking about mosquito abatement and control and what homeowners and residents can do to make sure that they protect themselves. And we did a, my entomologist did a presentation for the Ag Commissioner meeting and she provides the education so that they can also maintain their licensing. And that's one of the requirements that we have, licensing. The district staff continues to work and meet with local public works departments in Palmdale and Lancaster and the County of Los Angeles. The LA County Emergency Preparedness Response Program, the LA County Vector Management Environmental Health Department, the LA County Supervisors. This year, we went down to meet with the council, the LA County Council members and we presented all of Southern California, all of the vector control districts so that they have a greater understanding of what it is that we're doing, the outreach that we're doing and what it is that we're actually doing in the fields.
Was it with the council or the supervisors?
It was with the supervisors, yeah. Supervisors. And then we worked with the LAFCO Commission also. The Board of Trustees and the staff continued in their commitment to transparency and financial stability in 2017. And this was evident in the adoption of a balanced budget and receiving an outstanding audit for the fiscal year 2016 and '17. And like I said, our 2017-18 year will be ending on June 30th this next, this month. And our season has already begun. Typically, we start, we bring our staff in April when it starts warming up. And we bring them in so, because we can only work them 1,000 hours. So we stagger them in so that we have coverage from April through October. And that's typically our season. And that's determined by the weather. We have, some of the other agencies that in Los Angeles, Southern California, they have a more temperate climate. And of course, up here, we have distinct winter and a distinct summer. So during the winter months, the mosquitoes are dormant because it's too cold for them to breed. So when they start to become more active, then that's when our season begins. We've tripled our trapping efforts this year. So we've got a lot more mosquito trapping that we're doing. But we have stopped our Sentinel Chicken program. It was getting more and more difficult to find residences that were willing to have the chickens in their backyard. And also, one of the cities has now, you're not allowed to have chickens in your backyard. So we're working against that. Plus, the trapping is just as, if not more effective, because we can increase our trapping. I've got one employee that's dedicated to just trapping and that's what he does. Trapping every day. And so we can get a lot more mosquitoes in that because they come into the traps and we can test them and we send them off for testing to see if there's any disease that they're carrying.
So what city won't let you have chickens in your backyard?
Not this one.
That's a good answer.
It's the Antelope Valley. We're a rural community.
Well, and it's okay because...
What with chickens in my backyard?
Your neighbors might not because they kind of smell and there's a lot of flies and I think that was...
Our chickens didn't smell.
No. We, since our season has already started, we've done some significant trapping up to this point. We've submitted eight mosquito pools, which is a collection of mosquitoes and we send them in for testing. Zero have tested positive for West Nile virus. We submitted one dead bird. It also tested negative for West Nile virus. So, and since our season is just beginning, we'll track it throughout the rest of this year. Of course, just like every other year, our biggest challenge are the sources that we don't have easy access to and that's primarily backyard sources. And we have seen more cooperation from the residents, but we still have our challenges. But we work really successfully with the public works. They're very, if we can't get in there, then they'll go in there. If it's a home that is not, they're not going to clean up their pools, then the city helps us deal with that. So we work really well in cooperation with each other and it's made a huge difference when we can work together. And we really appreciate the support that we get from the city. And that's, do you have any questions?
Yes. Are you testing the mosquitoes to see if they're resistant to whatever pesticides you're using?
No, no, no. Some, they do build up a resistance and that's a fact. And so we do have to change the pesticides that we use. But that's, we don't test for that. What we test for is if they're carrying West Nile virus or St. Louis encephalitis because those are the two encephalitis that are primarily here in this area.
Well, if you're not testing for the resistance, how do you know if the pesticide you're using is effective?
Because industry, the industries test for that. And so when they show a resistance, then they stop, they stop with those pesticides and they, then we have new pesticides to use. So the industries where we purchase the pesticides, that's an ongoing thing. They've been testing for resistance consistently for years.
Thank you. Any questions?
Clarification. You do not use our plane, leaps, to check in the backyards for pools?
No, no. We contract with an agency. That's what they do is, and then they identify the pools. And then we go to the residents and find out if there's a pool that's there that needs...
We had a council member who thought it was more important that people be allowed to get West Nile than use the leaps plane to check for the bad pool.
No, the councilman was more concerned about keeping their word to the public.
And we, yeah, there's no crossover there. We contract for that to be done. And it's, because it is important because we don't, we can't see over everybody's yard and that's a big breeding source, so.
Thank you.
That's actually the question I was leading towards. I was going to ask a similar question that Mr. Crist asked. As a pool owner, I'm trying to find out, is, do you have a list, an inventory of those people that have pools perhaps? That's a more cost-effective way to go about finding out or?
We don't have a list of people that have pools. We have a list of people who have pools that don't maintain them. That's the list that we have.
How do you, how are you able to obtain that list other than doing flyover?
That's primarily how we obtain the list. And we can see, because I'm sure you've looked at Google Maps. You can see, you know, technology has really improved. We can get a pretty good idea of the dirty pools. Sadly, there are a number of people that don't maintain their pools during the winter and then when it starts to warm up, then that's when they maintain them. But there's already a problem. A lot of times, there's already an issue with the breeding in the pool.
Right, because that water needs to continually move, so.
Yeah.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm turning the meeting over to our Vice Chair for the Housing Authority. No, I don't need to. Okay.
And for the record, too, Vice Mayor, I need to recuse myself on HACC-1 when we move into Housing Authority actions. I have property within the area.
Are you pulling it for CC-1 or CC-1N2?
Just CC-1 from my understanding.
And as a result, there is no longer a quorum as to CC-1. It will have to be continued to the next Housing Authority meeting. So the only action that you'll be taking is on HACC-2.
Okay, there we go.
So we're going to pull HACC-1?
And continue that.
And continue to the next meeting, yes.
Okay. Do we have a report on HACC-2? We do have a speaker card.
Of course you do.
Good evening, Mayor Perris and Lancaster Housing Authority members. Inside Development, a California limited liability company, or an affiliate thereof, plans to finance the acquisition, construction, and development of a multifamily rental housing project development, commonly known as Kensington Campus located Avenue I and 32nd Street West. To date, the Lancaster Housing Authority and/or City of Lancaster has approved a disposition and development agreement and a home loan agreement between the Lancaster Housing Authority and Inside Development and approved California Municipal Finance Authority's issuance of a housing revenue bond to finance the subject property. The Lancaster Housing Authority, in partnership with Inside Development, is intending to address the objectives of reducing homelessness and providing affordable housing in the City of Lancaster. This project is unique and not like any other existing homeless development. On-site, there will be a variety of types of housing for homeless, up to and including permanent housing, with all wraparound services available on-site, including mental health therapy, job training, and much more, to assist homeless persons and families to develop and attain a stable and independent life. The project has been designed to inspire and support a transition from homelessness to self-sufficiency. For all affordable housing projects, developers are required to record deed restrictions that limit rents for a period of 55 years. Taking into consideration the extraordinary use and restrictions imposed on the developer, subsidies and/or incentives are necessary to complete and operate quality, affordable housing projects. The Lancaster Housing Authority will loan to the developer 692,000 for construction and development of the subject property so that the City of Lancaster will have a superior and innovative housing project. The developer will own and operate the affordable multifamily units. Fifty of the 51 units will be available for homeless persons or families who have achieved independence from being homeless. The People Concern, a nonprofit corporation, will lease the auxiliary buildings from Inside Development and will manage, operate, and provide support service to homeless persons, families, and the tenants of the multifamily housing project. One of the goals of The People Concern is to assist the tenants to retain housing and to maximize their ability to live independently. Staff believes the construction of the multifamily housing project is an excellent use of the land in harmony with the surrounding uses as outlined in the housing element of the general plan. Therefore, staff is recommending that the authority please approve the loan agreement between the Lancaster Housing Authority and When Life Hand You Limons LP for the construction of the proposed Kensington Campus multifamily residential project located at the West Avenue I and 32nd Street West. Are there any questions?
Michael.
Good evening. Last Thursday, I had an interesting day. It started on the east side of town when I used the east side pool and I moved down toward downtown to areas that used to house the homeless. Shelter in that area looked like it could be developed. Later on during the day, I had occasion to go to the animal care facility on the east side. I went down Avenue I. I passed a veterans home and then I passed the area that Scott is developing for this project. And I was just flabbergasted at the size of the project. And I proceeded on down the road toward the animal care facility and I made the wrong turn and I was going toward the Challenger Youth Building. Turned around and went to the animal care facility. The point of this trip was to check on some animals, but I learned a lot about this project. First of all, when I was passing the project, a little ways down the road, there was a new project of homes, Sunset Homes, a new housing development. I think the city should step back before they approve this. And the reason is that we had a bond, potential bond measure or whatever on the ballot, two-thirds, not two-thirds, but at least one-half of the population said they didn't want to be taxed for a facility like this. for a facility like this. And I, I don't think we're doing the right thing by putting this project on the east side. We need that land for housing. And I'm going to come back up here in a little bit when we talk about the bonds and give you my idea, what we should do with that. Scott can go ahead and build it, but I want to do something else with it. And I want to do something else with the homeless. And I'll come back up here when we bring this up on the PH-2 or whatever and give you my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I need a motion in a second for HACC-2.
Seeing no discussion, I'll make the motion to approve HACC-2.
A second?
Just for the record, Cassandra is sitting in Kitty's place. So, the vote is showing that Kitty voted, so it's actually Cassandra voting, so it's three. Let's just do it orally, so it'll be...
For a clear record, that's a good idea.
Cleaner. So, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously with Kitty being absent. Let's go back to HACC-1. Is there a need for this to happen as soon as possible?
We would like it to happen the next meeting, but no, we can wait till the next meeting.
And where is the conflict of interest?
He was, he was questioning, my understanding that the area that's within the corridor is fairly close to the property I own on 20th.
If I'm not mistaken, this has to do with Medical Main Street.
Correct.
And Ken owns property in that planning area. He and his...
Yeah, just sphere of influence. I, again, I'd much rather, you know, I'd rather recuse myself. I don't want people questioning the...
Okay.
Some kind of involvement.
Ken, we question anyway.
Meeting back over to the mayor.
Thank you. City manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you.
He's, he's sharp, and he's sharp on me. And just because I don't want to be like the guys down in the other direction, gosh darn.
They don't have chickens either.
Is he throwing down?
I'm going to wait for that later.
All right, where are we at? Council actions. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the council minutes?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Consent calendar, anything to be removed?
Mayor Paris, again, I have a conflict on CC-1. And given the circumstance, if you take a look at also 2, CC-4, they are reciprocal in relationship to the same property I own on Beach. So, I need to recuse myself.
It's hard sitting on a council when you're a slumlord, isn't it?
Correct.
To, to clarify, I believe Councilmember Mann was referring to SACC-1, not CC-1.
Yes, I'm sorry. My apologies.
So, that's the item on which you're planning to recuse.
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as currently comprised, pulling SACC-1 and CC-4.
What about 2? I thought you wanted 2 pulled. You're good with 2?
Nope.
Okay, all right.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. Councilman Mann has left the room for CC-1 and CC-4. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve SACC-1 and CC-4.
I'll second.
Let's vote. And it's approved unanimously. It's one of those days, what can I say? All right, joint public hearing. JPH-1, the public hearing is now open. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes.
Then, let's hear the report from Mr. Bozegian. I take it you're going to need help with this, right?
We work as a team.
Okay.
Each adding as a block to the next.
Good answer, good answer, good answer.
Thank you.
It's sort of like one of those season things I watch on Netflix, right?
I don't get Netflix.
You don't get Netflix? We got a city manager who doesn't watch Netflix?
I'm too busy working.
We really ought to have an executive session over that.
Look at the budget. We're, he doesn't have enough in there. Wow, let's start over again. So, Mayor Paris, city council members?
What about, what about Amazon? You watch Amazon?
This has turned into a referendum of what I watch now. I watch a lot of...
You certainly have to watch iTunes.
I watch a lot of baseball in MLB, on MLB.
Why? The mayor is trying to find out from you.
There's an article in the Wall Street Journal about why baseball is the best sport to learn how to deal with failure and to succeed and to even make...
Why would you want to, why would you want to be a failure? I'm just curious. I mean, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Cassandra, help me. Should we start again?
Maybe.
Brett, could you give me more time? We are not going to fail. This city is on the right track. We are genuinely pleased to present this budget to you because for the first time in 10 years, this could be considered more aspirational than deferring certain things that the council and folks want to do. We have the most reserves that the city has ever had. And we also are going to propose generational investments. There's a lot of hard work that went into this, not the least of which is by council, who we sincerely thank for the meetings, the briefings, the direction throughout the year to make sure that what we're proposing is equal to the dreams and the aspirations and what you guys want to see. Also, we had a great budget team that worked on this, Pam, Jason, Michael, Toy, Kathleen. After some comments from me about the outlook and priorities, you're going to hear from Jason about future initiatives. You're going to hear from Rhonda on some of the operational aspects of one department showing that we're not static, we improve. And you're going to hear from Pam on operational and capital finances. First, let's talk about the budget. This budget is not only balanced, but it robustly funds operations, but it also funds generational initiatives. We'll start with public safety in consultation with the Sheriff's Department. We have the largest contract in LA County for sheriff services. We always look at deployment and such, but there's a big issue, and the council is aware of it. We and other stations, but we in particular are affected because we have 28 vacancies for sworn positions at our station. And that impacts the overhead items that we're paying for, yet not receiving yet. The Sheriff's Department, in particular, our station, does a good job of that, but this is an issue that the mayor and council have taken on directly, and we need to have that resolved. One thing I would like to point out in the sheriff's budget, we have four retired deputies that are proposed. We have two now and two coming in the future. And they've been a godsend because what they've done is been able to deal with, directly with Mr. Durico and his department, quality of life issues. So, we are fully funding the Sheriff's Department this year, and we're adding the addition of four retired deputies to our, our portfolio. Operations...
Can you go back, go, go? If we wanted to add more deputies, we're prohibited from doing that, correct?
Yes, the sheriff, there was two cities in, of the 44 contract that wanted to, and the sheriff said they will not entertain any additional deputies.
And we have 28 positions that we're paying for that aren't being filled.
Overhead items that would, yes, they would quibble a little bit on the semantics, but the answer is yes.
So, then they're working overtime to try to replace those hours that are missing?
The way our contract is, is we pay for a certain amount of hours and minutes on the contract. So, they use overhead items like detectives, sergeants, et cetera, to backfill those minutes. But you're then not having detectives detecting and sergeants and such. In a busy station, that gets candidly downright dangerous because you have people that are maxed out on overtime and people aren't as effective when they're working overtime every week and every month at the max. It's a big issue for the Sheriff's Department, for the Board of Supervisors.
Just thinking off the cuff in that, have we looked at a combination of private-public, public safety officers?
Absolutely. I think, I think our four deputies is sort of a toe in the water towards that, the retired deputies. The beauty of retired deputies is they have, if they're reservists, they have all the rights, they can make arrests, they can do all of those things. But yet, they're under our direction. And really candidly, there's a lot of people retiring. One of the issues the sheriff has is there's so much attrition going on because there's so many deputies that are reaching 50 or so and retiring. But that's a pool that we're tapping. So, the answer is yes.
No, I understand, but we, we have to do something different. And what we have to do different, it's not our deputies' fault that they're, they're understaffed. We want them to have at least 28 more deputies out there. But the hiring process is keeping that from happening, correct?
A combination of the recruitment, hiring, yes. And candidly, the county did not fund recruitment or efforts to the extent they should for several years after the Great Recession.
Okay, can we explore that a little bit more? It doesn't have to be now, but with Mr. Durico in regards to hiring retired deputies?
Allison, find out what it would take to make Lee the chief of police for the City of Lancaster. And then see what it would take to have an auxiliary force to support the Sheriff's Department until such time as we have a full complement of officers up here. But for 10 years, we have been understaffed. For the 10 years I've been mayor, we, they have not fulfilled the contract that they have with the city. I don't really care one way or the other, except for the fact we are now 28 deputies down. That means people in this city are suffering the, the impact of that crime from the lack of that enforcement. If it's going to take radical measures, it takes radical measures, all right?
We'll look into it.
I think that might be a solution. And then we just take over all of the parks, all of the, the schools, all of the public buildings with our own people and let the Sheriff's Department have the rest of it until such time as we get a full complement of officers up here. All right, any objections to that?
No.
Good, let's do that, all right?
Got it, thank you. Thank you. We will save operations until later in the presentation. Really want to focus on three initiatives, three focuses of this budget. One is homelessness, the homeless initiatives that are going on in the city right now. I know the city has a great story to tell on what it's doing, but this year has to be the year that the city leads the coordination of those efforts. They're too fractured, candidly. And it starts with the recognition, and I know the mayor has talked about this several times, that residents and businesses are equal stakeholders in homelessness. It is not just the homeless that are stakeholders. Homelessness affects our businesses and our residents. November last year, the homeless shelter closed through the good work of the mayor, the council, Catherine Barker, Supervisor Barker. We have the Salvation Army Shelter that's open 24/7 now at 60th and I. It has more beds and it has full-time service for folks. So, we're able to stabilize. Right now, we have a homeless plan going on in this city that will be very specific when it's done of what the conditions are and what could be done. We talked about Kensington Campus. That will have the capacity and the wraparound services to truly start to rehabilitate people and get people to whatever the highest function they can have in, in society. There's a lot of ordinance that have been proposed. You will see ordinances over the next few months in this budget document and in this budget year that deal with shopping carts or feeding people without health permits, things that make it less attractive to do those activities in the City of Lancaster. What the public may not see, but there's an extraordinary amount of money spent on, is encampment cleanups. Encampments are dangerous when they're in public right of way, when they're in drainage ditches. They're dangerous to the public, they're dangerous to the homeless. We have to coordinate. There's a lot of hoops we have to jump through. We coordinate daily with LASSA on these things. There's a lot of money that's spent on that. And there's urgent responses that are required, whether it's underground homeless encampments or dealing with HEPE. So, there's a lot that this city spends and this community spends that needs to be coordinated better, and this budget year will be the year that we need to do that. And we will be coordinating those things better. Another thing we're very excited about, which deals with coordination and leveraging the city's current efforts, is elevating design, aesthetics, and cleanliness of this city. We do a lot of things, but we can do it better by coordinating, and we can do it better by using our partners and holding our partners accountable. We could work better with waste management on trash and dump cleanups. We could certainly do a much better job, and we will, of holding commercial property owners accountable for what goes on, on their properties. Sometimes now, they turn a blind eye and call the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, but how, how do we do that when we're not accountable for what goes on in the city's property?
We have to do that, too. That's part of what we need to do.
Perhaps we do that first.
That's where the cleanups come in, but I would submit that we need the commercial property owners to help us out.
Well, I agree, but I just don't want to be, be putting that burden on people until we're performing. And that includes the county and the state's property. I mean, most of these issues really aren't commercial property.
Fair enough. Point taken.
Thank you.
The other thing that we need to look at is things like engaging better Architectural Design Commission and the Planning Commission. You'll hear a little bit about public arcs, art, when Rhonda speaks. We need to look at our landscape, and we've started to do this, but we're going to continue to do this. Look at our landscape maintenance districts and our perimeter landscape areas as opportunities to enhance and invite people into the city as opposed to just being there. So, you're going to see a big coordination effort over that six months funded in this budget and going on. And you'll hear a little from Jason on some of the facility aspects of what we're going to do there. One of the exciting things that Jason will talk about is how we're going to modernize and take a big step in modernizing and enhancing our infrastructure this coming year. It's way overdue, but it's very difficult in a single budget year to propose a multimillion-dollar initiative. We believe we've come up with a way that's feasible and appropriate and affordable to do all of it in one fell swoop without taxing our taxpayers through their property taxes. So, you'll hear more about that from Jason. Nothing is more important in local government, in any government, than prudently managing the public's money. Because nothing happens without that, including public safety. As we said, we have good reserves, 30-plus percent. In addition to the infrastructure investment you'll hear about, we have other exciting and game-changing initiatives. However, we need to be financially resilient. That's our prime responsibility that we take. That's all of our prime responsibility. And that means you can't expect the status quo. You have to anticipate and leverage change. If you don't, something as simple as a $1 million reduction in revenues or a $1 million increase in expenses that's unexpected could disproportionately impact you going forward. So, what we must do is develop new revenue streams, which you'll hear about and you see. We have to undertake efficiencies, and we are, and making more data-driven decisions for those efficiencies, maximizing partnerships with new and existing partners. We have to facilitate first-rate technology for our residents and businesses, and you hear about that. We need real and diverse housing and education choices for our residents. In short, we need to make sure that Lancaster is a city that people want to stay in and people want to move to, to thrive. That's part of what our charge is, and we believe this budget will set us on the course. This council has done an amazing job, and I can't say how much I appreciate not only the fiscal restraint, but the innovative initiatives. But it's been done without a lot of financial resources. We're starting to see those resources, the fruits of the labor of some of the initiatives, and how we use those and how we set up the next decade is critical. I'm going to turn it over to Jason now to talk a little about that, and then we'll be back up at the end for Q and A.
Mayor and council, a theme that runs throughout the budget is an understanding that there is, this city's going to be here much longer than everybody in this room. And that we have to manage and steward our assets as if we're planning for the next 50 years in mind. That's a tall order with one budget. However, it's not just one budget or one budget item, it's a philosophy. Included in this budget is the funding for a number of policies, procedures, and programs specifically designed to assure that we are prepared for the future. A future of technology, a future of... A future of technology, a future of development, and the future of economic vitality and design for our community. As to technology, there are a number of programs which we'll be implementing this year. Not only will be expanding our telecommunications capabilities with Wi-Fi, fiber, the densification of our cellular grid, we're also increasing our security and safety capabilities through technology. Part of the budget includes technology upgrades at a number of public facilities and additional tools for our law enforcement personnel. Next, we're going to show you a short video of one of these such tools that we'll be integrating into the Sheriff's Department as well as our security services.
Before you go on...
Yes?
While we're dealing with this law enforcement issue, I would like some type of survey process of the current deputies in Lancaster and get their input as to what they think the issues are. But I'm hearing more and more about a morale problem within our station, which is unacceptable. I want it fixed. If those guys are not happy in their working environment, they're not performing at 100%. Find out what the issue is. All right? Next 30 days? Thank you. Go on, I'm sorry, Jason.
Pharaoh Zone 3D, a revolutionary software application for public safety professionals. It is the first of its kind to enable investigators to move fluidly between 2D and 3D environments and enhance the quality of incident reconstruction analysis. And now introducing immersive virtual reality capabilities to experience crime, crash, fire, and security planning scenes, not just in 3D, but in virtual reality. It is the only software that gives you the ability to view Pharaoh point clouds, diagrams, reconstructions, and animations in VR. Precise drawing and editing tools make it easy to create accurate 2D and 3D diagrams for any forensic scene. Use measurements from many different sources, such as drones, manual measurements, and total stations. Import your previous files from other drawing programs, including CAD Zone and ARIS. Animate symbols, including cars, people, and objects. Sync your animations to model collisions and inflict damage at key event points. Add shadows, light source, smoke, explosions, and more to create impactful presentations and training scenarios. Use Google or Bing Maps and include the terrain markers to create 3D landscapes where animations automatically hug the ground. Smart tools have grown even more powerful with crash analysis tools and CSI tools. Analyze bullet trajectories, blood spatter, and perform accurate crash reconstruction analysis based on the measurements you take at the scene, including inline and 360-degree momentum, skid, profile, critical speed, and damage analysis data. Generate courtroom-ready reports, fly-throughs of an entire scene, and create walkthroughs to show a specific point of view. 3D diagramming and animation has never been easier, with an intuitive user interface and productivity tools to make rapid drawing assured. For an extra boost of the power, try the Pharaoh Zone 3D advanced version. Import information-rich point clouds from Pharaoh Scene and many other formats. Snap lines to the point cloud, show, hide, and obscure parts with clipping boxes. Fly through them with cameras or use them to build accurate scenes. Pharaoh Zone 3D: Imagine the Possibilities.
In addition, from the traffic perspective, we also have opportunities to map facilities so that the machine, the 3D apparatus, can actually map this facility. So we can look at it from an attack perspective, from the Sheriff's Department, or from an emergency response perspective. So we'll be able to do that at the high schools for shooting incidents and things like that.
We would prefer to call it a rescue scenario rather than an attack scenario.
Rescue scenario.
But this is designed for an active shooter.
Correct.
So...
So if these facilities are mapped, they have the opportunity to externally look into the facility and determine a response.
Let's expound on it a little bit. It allows our Sheriff's Department to pre-map a school. If there was an active shooter there, they could go in, they know where the desks are, they know where the walls are, they know where everything's at prior to them going into an active shooter. So it just protects everybody a little bit more.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
In addition to our technology upgrades, in addition, our technology upgrades include opportunities to better understand and harness our capabilities of the data we possess, to allow better data-driven decision-making through multiple software systems and vendors. The utilization of this data will allow increased efficiency effectiveness for the services we provide. We're currently working with IBM Watson to do our first pilot project to kind of test these systems. We think it's going to be a really unique opportunity to kind of integrate this technology into the decision-making processes we have, and we appreciate the...
When are we rolling that out?
We're in the midst of getting proposals as we speak. And in those proposals are our timeline. We're proposing reshaping of the way we incentivize, stimulate, and value development, as well as where we focus our economic development effort. By focusing in core areas of the community like Medical Main Street, the Boulevard, the Owen Park, and Alamo Mall area, we can maximize the utilization of underutilized land and infrastructure. We plan to evaluate how we, as a city, value and incentivize development to assure long-term financial stability and diversity of housing types in the development process. Through a number of communications with Northrop, a common concern was expressed that there is a lack of differing housing types and styles for the workforce they are trying to retain and recruit. Through these processes, we'll be evaluating the infill and mixed-use housing types throughout the community and how to create a marketplace that assists in their construction. In addition, we will be placing much greater focus on design and development in the process, not only as it relates to aesthetics, but also as applies to the changing marketplace and retail needs. With a focus on design, we hope to create lasting economic benefits and increase the quality of life for our residents. A couple of examples of ideal developments include the improvements that were recently done at 10th and K and the new Marriott being constructed on the Boulevard. Each of these examples of types of sustainable development, we want to see. The common denominator is the fact that they're being constructed on underutilized land and infrastructure. At the completion of construction, the only thing that has changed is the tax revenue generated on that facility, and obviously jobs created, and the facilities themselves. All the infrastructure of those facilities already existed. We're already maintaining them. They already had the streets, the roads, the sewers, the streetlights, all the infrastructure associated with it. We just weren't capturing all the allowable tax revenue off those facilities. So focusing on those efforts on those entities will create a much more viable development process. We also have a responsibility to be stewards of our public assets in an appropriate manner. Just as we believe our community will exist beyond each of us in this room, so will our facilities. Over the years, we have placed funds in the budget to incrementally fix aging infrastructure by doing minor rehab improvements at our facility on an as-needed basis. The reality is, the age of each of our facilities is getting to a point that it was time to do major rehabilitation and modernization. This budget includes an infrastructure renovation and modernization plan, which will allow the city to do major improvements and modernization in one major project, eliminating the piecemeal approach we have used in the past. The improvements and upgrades will be comprehensive and take into account major maintenance, safety, usability, and longevity. There will be a noticeable difference in the quality of our assets. The plan calls for the issuance of a $15 million bond to fund these improvements. It should be noted that this bond is not on the burden of the... will not be a burden on the property taxpayers, but rather paid out of existing revenues of the city. As a side note, the projects and programs that I just mentioned all require additional research, approvals, and procedures to implement. Today, we are merely approving a budget to initiate these actions. All of the actions will be before this council for action, debate, and comment this budget year. Many times, we talk about the forward-thinking big projects. However, we also have a robust, ongoing operational function. As with other projects, we are regularly rethinking how we do our jobs better and more effective. One example of this is our Parks, Recreation, and Arts Department. And now I'll turn it over to Rhonda to have her talk about the changes in Parks, Recreation, and Arts, unless you have any questions.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Krist, and Council. As Jason and Mark mentioned, funding operating budgets provides for continuous programming, ongoing maintenance, and keeps the arts prevalent within our community. As good stewards of the taxpayer dollars, we also understand, though, the need to evolve to meet the ever-changing needs of our community. Therefore, the 2018-19 fiscal year budget also funds continuous improvement initiatives. With that thought in mind, PRA 2030 is our department's innovative approach to best serve the community for the next decade. To understand, though, where we want to go, we first need to remember who we currently serve and how we do so. When we put this slide together, it was staggering to me, and I think it speaks volumes about what our council believes is important in our community. Each year, we provide recreational and cultural services to more than 1 million people, and I believe that to be a conservative number. Our department alone has 250,000 people celebrating at 22 citywide events and parks each year, 65,000 individuals visiting five cultural and performing arts institutions, 375,000 individuals recreating in hundreds of athletic programs and community classes, 237,000 children playing and learning in 17 different after-school programs and camp programs, and 215,000 visitors competing in local sports tournaments, all across 463 acres and 54 buildings at 13 parks, throughout 15 schools, and across 94 square miles. As such, we believe that PRA has a very unique opportunity to enhance the entire perception of Lancaster. To fully understand where we need to focus our efforts in the coming years, we asked ourselves and we asked the public through surveys and constant engagement, what do you want to see going forward? Who do we want to be going forward? What improvements do you desire out of your city? Between now and 2030, as a result of that input, we will focus in these key four areas to ensure we're fulfilling the needs of our residents and visitors in every way possible. And we're going to start with culture. To strengthen our community image and our sense of place, our department will incorporate cultural unity initiatives into our everyday operations. We will focus on creative placemaking to shape the physical and social character of our city. We will animate our public spaces, rejuvenate our structures and our streetscapes, and improve local business viability, bringing diverse people together to celebrate and inspire our future. Creative placemaking is a fairly new term in government, but it's very regularly used in the arts programs. And what that does is it brings people of various groups together, various backgrounds, various locations, to come and share their ideas to come to a better end result in these communal spaces. To launch this cultural transformation, we will initiate a mapping project to evaluate all of our existing programs, assets, and offerings in relations to who we are as a city right now. This will allow us to identify service gaps to better serve our community at large. The community. Our current projects and programs often focus on creating community by partnering with local schools. But I also believe it's a basic human desire to want to help others. Every year, more than 1,500 people and organizations sign up to make a difference in our community in one day, right after Christmas, when they're exhausted from shopping and all of the Christmas and holiday activities. And what if we harnessed that energy from MLK Day and activated our community, including our seniors, such as our city manager, Mr. Bozigan? You're entirely too serious here. It was in the notes. And what if we engaged our teens regularly in service? That impact would be tremendous. Our focus, therefore, will be on creating and engaging multi-generational service opportunities for our residents in the coming years. Technology, this is a big one for us. Embracing today's technology, we will continue to create a smart infrastructure used to make better business decisions and operate more efficiently. A year ago, we started this process by implementing the Showware software at LPAC. Prior to a year ago, you could not pick your seat online, you could not pay necessarily online without glitching here and there, and you always had to print out paper tickets once you got to the box office. We have fixed all of that with the implementation of new software. And customer satisfaction is up. It's way up, actually. So let's build on that momentum. Forthcoming improvements include new registration software opportunities, implementation of an asset management program going paperless, and also the implementation of new physical technologies such as increased use of iPads and 3D printers. This investment in technology will also facilitate regular information gathering, which allows our department to make data-driven decisions, ensuring that we're effectively using our resources and meeting the requirements of our community. And finally, our largest endeavor. As Mark and Jason mentioned, we have made small investments over the past several years in our park system. We put a splash pad into Tierra Bonita, we are currently rehabbing East Side Pool, we've done some signage improvements, and we've worked on stadium rehabs, a new playground equipment at Alderado. I think it's also clear that we're very committed to the arts. We renovated and reactivated the Elise Clifford Interpretive Center at Prime Desert Woodland. We engaged in the Powell mural program. We also installed art in the first of three roundabouts. That mural program, just to make everybody aware, is also... the Powell is also coming back in 2018. It was so successful the last time. But I think now it's time to put a formalized program together, and that's what this speaks to. With Measure A funding and the newly passed Proposition 68, coupled with our local commitment to revitalization, as well as the forthcoming adoption of the Art in Public Places policy in August, we are poised to make significant improvements citywide, not just in our arts and our parks, but in our landscape maintenance districts, our perimeter areas, and other visible gateways. So why all of this? What is our end game? PRA 2030, it's our goal to be a technological leader exhibiting a business service mindset, to have a mentality that is continuously shaped through ongoing public input. Our Lancaster residents will have a clean and safe perception of Lancaster by 2030, or even before. They will have created new memories, and we will have garnered some increased social trust. We hope that our extended community and our visitors will see Lancaster as a destination location that is youth-oriented, embraces culture, and is focused regularly on the future. So collectively, if you will, we want to be dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for our residents and our visitors through dynamic programming, engaging cultural experiences, beautification of our public spaces, and have a commitment to meaningful innovation and sustainable practices. This is PRA 2030, and we're very excited about it. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those, but for now, it's my pleasure to introduce our Finance Director, Pam Statsman. We'll tell you a little bit more about how we plan to fund all of this innovation, as well as talk about our operating and CIP budget for the next fiscal year.
So who woke you up?
I know, right? I'm very excited about this. This was a few... this is a few months in the making. So we started in January, and we're kind of plugging along, and one day I said, you know, what are we doing now that we haven't been doing for the last five years? And the staff that you see behind me all said, you're right, let's do something different. And it's really... they're really driving this, and very excited about it, so.
Jason, if I were you, I'd be worried.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Mayor and Council, as Mark mentioned, we're excited to present to you a budget that is balanced and has healthy reserves. The fiscal year 1819 budget totals $188.1 million. All the projects and initiatives that we've covered thus far are included in the budget. The distribution breaks down into the following categories shown on the pie chart. It should be noted that the power enterprise of Lancaster Choice Energy and Lancaster Power Authority are self-funded, which means that the revenues that they take in exceed the proposed expenditures. In keeping with the council's priority, the public safety budget is almost $30 million in this budget year.
Say that again. The Power Authority and Community Choice and all that, the whole thing we're doing with the power, right?
Yes.
It's funding itself now.
That's correct.
So we're generating profits now.
Yes, and we are building reserves as well.
And it also paid back the loans.
This fiscal year, we will be... in the 1718 fiscal year, we will be coming at the next meeting to receive approval to pay back the loan.
Isn't that great? In that short of period of time.
It's awesome. It's very awesome.
I'm impressed. I mean, really impressed. And we're going to need that money for Lee.
The $188.1 million is comprised of general, restricted, and special revenue funds. The most flexible fund is the city's general fund. General fund revenues include sales tax, property tax, fees, grants, and transfers in. We are predicting those at $72.6 million. In 1819, we are projecting the general fund revenues to increase at least 6%. The graph at the left of this slide is an interesting look at the top two general fund revenue sources. The blue indicates the property tax revenues, and the green indicates sales tax revenues. This graph tracks these two revenues from 2007, when the Great Recession began, to our 1819 estimate on the far right. We hit our lowest revenue point... We hit our lowest revenue point in 2010, which is where it dips down, and we now far exceed our pre-recession high, so back in 2008.
That's good.
It is very good news. In this budget, we are recognizing revenue from medical cannabis. We are particularly excited as this diversifies our revenue base and has, and is as a result of council's bold action. Now I'd like to share the general fund expenditures and transfers out. These total $71.7 million. As can be seen in the pie chart, public safety comprises 41%, or the largest expenditure in the general fund budget. Another large component of the general fund budget is personnel, which is driven up by increasing benefit costs, including the CalPERS pension increase of 1.9% for the fiscal year 1819. Increases in operating costs are necessary to ensure services and programs remain at the level expected by both council and the residents. At the end of the day, the difference between the revenues coming in and the expenditures going out results in and out in a balanced budget. In fact, in 1819, we are anticipating almost a $1 million surplus.
My wife keeps wanting you to do that.
It's not a bad idea. At this time, I would like to share with you the capital improvement plan. We are anticipating closing the 1718 fiscal year with approximately $108 million of completed and carry-forward capital improvement projects. We propose to add $43.4 million in new funding. We have five ongoing state route 14 interchange projects that are in various stages of design and readying for construction. The map shown here highlights the roads to be touched under the umbrella of Revive 25 and other capital improvement projects. The various colors show the funding sources for each of the roadways. The yellow and green shaded areas on the map represent repaving efforts to be done within residential neighborhoods, so our residents will start to see the impact of the Revive 25. A couple of notable new projects in the proposed CIP are the transportation management system, which is aimed at improving traffic flow throughout the city, and we also have a downtown parking and lighting improvement project. I will now turn it back over to Mark for the closing comments and any questions you may have.
Personal note, I am very proud to work with these people. I think this is a very good budget. We believe this budget's a great roadmap for the next 12 months, but it's also a great platform for the next decade. But the one thing that we can never forget is what this council has always shown, which is to be nimble and take advantage of opportunities. We have no idea what's going to happen in the next 12 months, and anyone that says they do really doesn't, or certainly the next decade. This gives us a roadmap, it gives us the opportunities, but we have to be able to take advantage of the opportunities as they're presented before us, and we have to be nimble in doing that. Proud to present this, we're happy to answer any questions, comments, take direction you may have. The action before you today is simply to set a public hearing for the budget for council consideration and adoption on June 26, and we're all available to answer any questions.
I'm becoming increasingly concerned about the condition of our streets. I thought that we were going to have all those streets replaced within a certain timeframe. Has that changed?
No, by 2025. In fact, we're a little bit ahead of that. We can do a presentation for you guys in July on that.
As you pointed out earlier, we're going to be dead before then.
Jason pointed that out.
Oh, Jason.
I think he was making reference to you two. He wasn't talking about Angel and I at all.
Because I've been reminded many times, I've now joined your three club, the three in the middle, they're their club. It's not a club I wanted to be in.
Can you talk about?
How can we speed that up?
I think we're speeding it up now because of some of the funds like SB1 that allowed us to go into neighborhoods quicker, but we're absolutely 100% on track to meet it by 2025, which was the goal.
Why does it just feel like it's gotten really bad? Is that just them going down different streets these days?
No, there's, there's science behind it, but I think what happens is you notice that, like a pothole, for example, you don't notice the thousand potholes that are filled in a month.
I know what availability bias is.
Yeah, you notice the one that didn't get filled that you always go over, and then when it's filled a week later, you say, dang, it took them a week to do it. But, no, we will definitely do the program.
I've never seen that happen.
What's that? Well, you're blessed with a lot of patience. You're blessed with a lot of patience.
Are you lying to him? Is that what's going on here?
No, we're saying that you're blessed with a lot of patience, but a lot of other people aren't.
You know, in fact, I believe I've seen it done in less than a week.
Roll off this stuff, don't you?
My timing was off, though.
I was saying that I believe I've seen it done in less than a week.
We try to get to, in fact, we're starting in terms of data-driven decision-getting reports, and we're happy to share that from council on, for every two-week period, what complaints we get, how long it takes to resolve those complaints, and then compare them to that. The number one is graffiti, by far. Number two behind that is, I forget, potholes is number two.
Yeah, but I'm less concerned with the potholes than I am with the streets that are just needing to be resurfaced. I mean, fixing a pothole isn't going to do it.
Absolutely, and that's the idea behind Revive 25. But as I said, we will give you that presentation on not only the strategy. Over the last couple of months, you guys also approved contracts for us to better prioritize the roads by condition, to have a third party come in, do the condition, and do that, and which treatment would be most appropriate. You approved that about a month ago, I think, so.
So, if I could speak to, because I myself is as concerned as the mayor is, it's almost we're at that tipping point. It could have been because of where we started with Revive 25, but could we not see, could we not see a change possibly in the future to be more aggressive with the Revive 25 if the dollars come in? I mean, clear to me, it's, we have a very conservative budget. I don't want you to get the wrong idea that we haven't had physical responsibility, but I think what the mayor has said, I think now we're starting to see that tipping point. I know we're, what, two years into Revive 25?
About, I think, three years, yes.
Okay.
Or we could have Michael Reeves as the mayor. I was sure Marvin was going to say something.
I'm still thinking about it.
We hear you loud and clear. We will not only come back with the status, but a plan on what it would take to accelerate it.
Good, thank you.
Can you talk about PERS a little bit? I read a article in regards to PERS and how a lot of cities are going to get in trouble in the future. We took steps back in 2010, I believe it was, in our programs, but where are we at and how are we going to stay out of trouble?
Thank you, I was remiss in not bringing that up.
Do you guys really need a pension?
I'll ask Mrs. Bozigan her opinion on that. I could probably speak for her in this case. Long story short, the PERS and pension system in California is unsustainable, and people have known that for a long time. There are certain cities that are in worse shape than others. Our city is in good shape for a variety of reasons. Some of the things that we aggressively done, like reduce benefits, have three tiers, et cetera, some that is just a benefit that we have. We're only a 40-year-old city, so we don't have a ton of retirees. By being a contract city, while we do, are subject to things like vacancies at the sheriff's department, we don't have a lot of pensions for law enforcement, fire, et cetera. So all of that, plus prudent financial management, means that we can, going forward by our projections, will weather the storm of what it is. Our rate for PERS, we wanted to look at it compared to every other city. There are some cities that will pay $1 in benefit for every dollar they pay in salary. That's the highest, that's unachievable. For us, out of 427 cities and counties in the state that are in PERS, we are the 124th lowest, so we're in the, you know, the top 25% of lowest obligation. And going into the future, we're exactly in that same boat in '24, '25. But taking big cities, cities over $20 million in payroll, we are the 14th lowest out of 139 cities now in what we will pay in 2024.
Okay, are we counting 14 from the bottom up, or 14 down?
The lowest obligation, which is what you want. You want to pay the least amount, I should have said it that way. We will pay the least amount on a percentage basis, we will, of 14, of top 14. The least amount of all but 13 other cities, out of 139. And in '24, '25, when there's 159 cities, we will still be the lowest, the lowest 14th. There will only be 13 cities that will pay a lower. And again, there's a lot of that.
But I don't know, I don't know that that's the benchmark. I mean, if everybody's going bankrupt in PERS, so are the 14th person, the 14th city to go bankrupt?
That's a really good point, and there's two things to that. Number one, we projected out the height of the rate, what's it supposed to be in '24, '25. Our five-year projection shows that we can handle that without a reduction in service. But more so, there has to be reform at the state level, because PERS doesn't allow you to do common sense things, things that we would like to do. For example, one we would like to do is simply offer a hybrid plan to new employees, where everyone up to a certain point has a pension, and everyone after that has a defined contribution program. I personally believe that would help us recruit people, because if you were able to recruit young folks out of college and say, we're going to fund a 401 for you at 18%, that's yours when you leave, I mean, you know, from Northrop, that would be an incredible incentive. PERS does not allow that right now, for a variety of reasons. It's going to stake, it's going to take either state action to allow cities more flexibility, or two, an initiative, or three, what is going on right now is the California Supreme Court by the end of the year, probably by fall, will decide if obligations that are made to prior employees are promised to them going forward. Simple way to say that is it gives councils the flexibility going forward to negotiate new benefit structures, which they have not been able to do with existing employees reducing it. So there's a lot to it. I am very proud of this city for being in good shape for it, but we, like all cities, have to be real that the current system is an unsustainable system going forward, for the state and for the counties, and it's going to have, and for teachers, too. It's going to have to change. Cal-Stearns is a sustainable.
It begs the question, is it unsustainable for the city? Regardless of the reasons?
Based on our projections, it would not be, but we have to be prudent in terms of not hiring people that are going to pay till they're 90, looking at what you could do with contract labor, for example, what you could do contracting out, things like animal control. If a city had its own animal control, that's something they have a pension obligation. We don't have a pension obligation for animal control. If we have people that, you know, do certain tasks, they're a good example, when we do EIRs, we don't have a person that's sitting here ready to do environmental reports that we're paying. We contract that service out, buy it, get it done, and be done with it. So it's prudent management. We, this is probably the single biggest thing that I would say Jason and I deal with every day, is look at the financial future of the city and make those decisions.
But shouldn't we be putting reserves into it? Isn't that more prudent to put more money into it? I was looking at it, and there's unfunded liabilities that we have, and if we don't fund those liabilities now, we'll be much further behind the eight ball in the future.
But we've predicted it as just paying as you go the rate that PERS is saying, but your point is correct in that what we've looked at is, and we're studying, we don't have it for you yet, what investment can we make now to reduce our rates in the future? Rates, the rates in PERS are basically two things. There is the rate that you would be promised, that pays for the benefit you're promised. In Lancaster's case, it would be 13% that the employer pays, or 11%, I think. And then the amount that is the unfunded liability, meaning that it's over and above what people have been promised, you're not collecting enough, so that equals 26% Lancaster's case, and then employees pay 8% on top of that to get that. What we're trying to do, and we projected that out every year, what our rate increase is going to be. What the vice mayor is talking about is if we were to make an investment now, let's say we made a $5 million investment now, could we save 8 to 10 million in the next seven to 10 years? That's what we're evaluating, and we're not just evaluating it with public sector folks. We've engaged a couple of private sector firms, one that you recommended to us, and say, look, here's the issue, what is the best way to address this, so we're not just thinking like a government entity. But we do plan on coming back to you with that, but we would only make that investment if we could obviously leverage what we're paying now to save more over the next five to 10 years.
So also part of our unfunded liability, and maybe that should be also on the agenda that we should be speaking to the senator and the assemblyman. I mean, I think we need to work on it from all different directions, because we've got to catch 22 with people living longer as well, so that's a, that's a tough number to project out there.
Yeah, sadly, my belief is because the legislature has, has been very predisposed to be very supportive of public employees, unions and stuff, the change is likely not to come from the legislature. It's going to come from the courts first, and then possibly initiatives.
Not even requesting to make, not, not a change to some existing, but can we make a change so that in the future, we're in a better position?
Again, we can make that request, it's just the history has been, it's going to have to be through initiative or judicial. We will certainly set that up, make the request, but, okay, I think that's where we're going to have more.
Any questions?
No.
No good.
The action before you would be to set the public hearing?
Actually, to clarify, this is the public hearing. The action is to schedule the action on adoption of the fiscal year 2018-19 budget and five-year capital improvement plan, adjustments to the citywide fee schedule, and schedule the CCEA proposed fiscal year 2018-19 budget adoption, all for June 26, 2018.
Isn't this a good time to take a look at, are there other contracts we have with the county that they're not performing on, and do they owe us reimbursement for failing to, to provide the services we paid for? And what's the statute of limitations on facility? And is there an arbitration provision or mediation provision where we could just submit it to mediation and get some of that money back? And that would be to the county, not, not to any specific department, right?
I will look into all of that.
Just when they were beginning to think I was a nice guy. Thanks. Mr., oh, Fran. You thought I was going to forget you, didn't you?
Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, and council members, ladies and gentlemen, and staff. Of course, you know me, I'm Fran Sarris. Can you hear me? Because lately, since I've been sick, I've been losing my voice, so if you don't hear me.
And one of my hearing aids went out. We're in a lot of trouble.
Oh, boy, so we're in communication then.
I mean, to watch Netflix, I got to put the, what do you call that?
Closed caption.
Close caption.
Okay.
Mark's been doing that here lately, too, correct, huh, Mark? Just not on Netflix, though.
And the bogging.
Okay.
She's texting me, she doesn't want you to think we're near. Sorry, hon.
Brett, can you start her time over? Fran's got a time limit?
Well, I guess I'm just like anybody else, but better, in a way.
Fran, you got a crown on your head.
No, just don't cover my stick, did you?
Nothing wrong with his vision.
Okay. Basically, I know this might seem a little off-kilter, what I'm going to say, but last week, or the last meeting, this young man named John brought up the skate, the skateboard park, and I had already, last year sometime, I brought it up at supervisor, county supervisor meeting, because they were going to give, or they have projected to give, Quartz Hills, build a skate park for Quartz Hills in the amount of four... build a skate park for Quartz Hills in the amount of $4 million. And there was a drawing in the paper, I couldn't find, I have it, the newspaper that it came out of. And so I just kind of bringing it up again here. We talked, you talked about it at the last meeting, and.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. There's $4 million out there for a skateboard park?
At Quartz Hills.
Well, we can move things around a little bit. Donna's over there.
Lane Park got 1.2 million doll, it, in the county, got 1.2 million dollars for a skate park. Where is it?
It's just a new project. They haven't started the effort.
So what are we, chop liver?
Another request.
Another request.
I, I, actually, I've been thinking more and more about it. I, I think we, we should do that. What do you think?
I, I think we need to look at, I think we should do it. The ones I've seen that work well are when the skate community has some skin in the game. The ones I've seen that have been atrocious is when they're just left to be abused. We did offer, this council generously, I thought offered a guy who came in who owned pharmacy, the opportunity to say, "You can have a location in free land if you could get it built and/or if you want to operate it." And we haven't heard back. But yeah, but I think it has to be a partnership. Can't just be the city providing it. My opinion.
We may want to, we may want to think about some performance parameters, meaning if law enforcement has to respond so many times a month, we close it the next month. I mean, you know, upfront, have, have consequences clearly delineated, you know. We should be innovative in how we do it, but I think it's time to build them a skateboard park.
Okay, we will come back.
So Donna, could you take that money and give it to us?
Or even split it? We could take half.
Yeah.
Half?
She doesn't like me right now, I'm not turning around.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your consideration. Another.
Hey, we'll get a skateboard park done in the next two years. How's that?
Terrific. Your kids will be so happy.
We can do that, can't we?
I think we could actually probably do it slightly sooner than that, but we have, doing it right is going to be the trick, not doing it.
No, I agree.
And I think the county's going to be generous in giving us some money apparently, so that'll make it easier.
Yeah.
Can we put it by Fran's house?
They're already by my house across the street.
Actually, I think it is going to end up being by Fran's house.
Well, we, seriously, I want to do this.
Yeah. Yeah. If I could add, I, I'm more inclined to agree with Mark though, I think, Mayor. I, I would prefer moving forward as trying to do a public-private partnership. I think that's the wave of the future in relationship, especially about skateboard park. I think that would be the, the right track to go down.
We need a specific plan. We need a specific plan. Thanks.
One more quick little thing if I can say.
You got a skateboard park. You want something else now?
Yes, I do. I don't want it, but my seniors do. The senior, the, the, the expansion, okay, right now they're kind of on a slow stop because of electric, the electrical situation. But also what was brought to my attention was, we're going to need furniture. There's no budget in there for furniture or any, anything.
Furniture for the.
Furniture. You know, like benches or cushions or something to sit on.
And you got a wheelchair, for heaven's sake.
I know, I carry my chair wherever I go. But, you know, you, you, like you gave us the computers, remember you gave us 20 computers? Where you found that they weren't being used someplace else? I mean, we're, we don't want, I mean, I'm not asking, on my part anyway, I'm not asking for first-class things that would be nice to have, but if we just can get some furniture in it, that'd be really nice. And.
Well, we could have a public-private partnership, IKEA.
There you go.
And now, one more quick thing, since you guys were talking about.
There has to be, there has to be a budget for furniture, right?
Yeah, the construction of the senior center's been painfully slow, but should be have certificate of occupancy soon. The furniture and operations, everything would be a separate budget of the county and running the senior centers, and I don't know if there is a budget or not for that.
Is there, are there, is there going to be a partnership between the City of Lancaster and the county to kind of give the stunt?
Careful, Fran, that costs money.
Wow. I'll give you my $5.
We'll work on it. Don't worry, you're going to have something to sit on.
Good. I just want to bring one more quick little thing. Rhonda brought up on the community part, engagement for the youth and senior programs and volunteers. If you need somebody, call me. Okay, no, really, but I can, I think I can help somewhere. Thank you very much for your time, your efforts, and I, gosh, this, to me, this is the best town to live in. My kids want me to move, but I say, "No way, Jose, I'm staying here." Thank you very much.
You know, we should take the film of that guy wanting the, wanting the skateboard park and see what he did. And, you know, we've been hearing about skateboard parks for 10 years, and all of a sudden he put something in motion. Would be interesting to see exactly what it was. You know? All right, good. So do we got a vote on anything?
Yes.
Yes, yes, you do. You need to schedule the June 26 adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 budget, the five-year capital improvement plan, adjustments to the citywide fee schedule, and the CCEA proposed fiscal year 2018-19 budget adoption, all for June 26, 2018. So the action would be to schedule those and close the public hearing after the last speaker, but I understand there might be one more?
I don't think so.
Nope? Oh, okay.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move JPH.
Close the public hearing, please.
What?
Close the public hearing.
Oh.
Please.
Do I got to hit the thing? Ow!
I'll move JPH 1 with all the necessary things that the attorney said.
You know, when he first took that seat, he could actually remember what to say.
And you could hear.
Making fun of people with disabilities is not appropriate in today's society.
You talking about Mark again?
No, it's okay, it's okay to make fun of Mark. Oh, we need to vote. All in favor? I mean, no, let's vote. Unanimous, good, let's move on. Okay, public hearing item number one. Do we have a?
No speaker cards.
We'll waive the staff report. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we adopt resolution 18-26.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. PH 2.
No speaker cards.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt resolution 18-27.
I'll second that.
Do I have to open the, do I have to actually say, "Open the public?
I do need you to open and close them.
Open and close it.
Okay, I'm going to open and close PH 1. Now, let's go to PH 2. It's opened. Is there a motion?
Let's go back and.
Oh, no, I got to close it and then vote.
Correct.
Do you want me to redo it all?
Can, can we start over with PH 1?
Okay.
Thanks.
PH 1, public hearing's open. Public hearing is now closed. Redo your motion, please.
I'll move that we adopt resolution.
Remember at the first time, but.
18-26.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Open the public hearing on PH 2. Close the public hearing on PH 2. Is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt resolution 18-27.
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Moving on, joint public hearing.
No speaker cards.
PH 3.
Got to open it. Still on the public hearing.
Open the public hearing. Is there, close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move resolution 18-27 to 8.
I'll second.
Let's vote.
PH 4.
PH 3. Is there a speaker card?
We just did PH 3.
We're on PH 4.
We're on PH 4.
PH 4.
And you may need to recuse yourself.
I have to recuse myself on 4. We already did 3?
You did 3.
Okay. So 4, I'm recusing myself. I have a friend of mine who's a slumlord in the area, and so I have to.
I can't believe you. I own two houses on.
Ken owns property there?
Slum, slumlord.
Don't take it personally.
Two houses.
Who's doing the presentation? We have two speaker cards.
Mr. Vice Mayor, would you open the public hearing, please?
I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Vice Chairman Crest. Thank you, and city council members. We are here this evening to conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA. TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which the project to be financed is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. City council has conducted several such hearings over the course of the last couple of years. When Life Hand you Lemons II, LP, the borrower, proposes to obtain tax-exempt financing in the amount not to exceed $13,000, to assist in the finance, I mean, 13 million, sorry, to assist in the financing of the acquisition and development of another 51-unit multifamily rental housing development commonly known as Kensington Campus 2, located at Avenue 1 and 32nd Street West in the city of Lancaster. The California Municipal Finance Authority is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. The debt is to be issued by CFMA, and the city will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city will also bear no cost in the issuance of the proposed debt. This is a private loan with the borrower and their bank. It is recommended that the city council adopt resolution 18-29 approving the issuance of bonds for the CFMA for the benefit of the borrower. Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TEFRA, the Code, and the California Government Code, Section 6500.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, you want to tell us about it?
No, I, I, I think there's always this misinterpretation that whether it's a California bond or a federal bond, which has been already appropriated, money set aside for projects such as this, because if they tried to attempt to do it on either a state level to have a public hearing, or a federal level to have a public hearing, it would be onerous and difficult. So that's the reason why this governing body holds the public hearing. Is that not correct, Alice? Correct me if I'm wrong.
That was a very good explanation.
Yeah, there's just a misconception. We're not, we're not guaranteeing anything. All we're doing is holding the public hearing, following the act to make sure that this pro, or to either hear public testimony, good or bad, and then making a prudent decision. Essentially, we're either operating in, in lieu of a federal agency or a state agency.
That is correct.
But we're not financially responsible for these bonds.
This is not our bond.
Nope. Not ours. They're guaranteeing them, not us.
Michael, did you get that? Come on up.
Vice Mayor, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. When I was up here before and spoke about this, I listened to Elizabeth say who was going to be renting these places. This project is right next to the veterans home, and I believe that all the occupants of this new facility should be veterans. Now, you remember Vice Mayor Chris, AV Press did an article on the homeless, and you were quoted that you thought they underestimated the homeless baby. But they did mention in there, there were 173 homeless vets, and I think we owe it to the veterans of this country who put on the uniform, that they get first priority to any housing over there on Kensington. Now, I, if I'm not mistaken, the county's going to close the Challenger facility over there by the pound. Is that right, Donna? Yeah, I thought that they were going to close that. If you wanted to use that for a homeless facility, for the other homeless people, you could use that facility and use the new buildings over there by the veterans home.
Michael, stand subject, okay?
Okay.
As far as about this bond, should we be doing it? Should we not be doing it?
Well, we shouldn't be doing it without the stipulation that the veterans get priority on the housing.
I don't think we have that legal right to stipulate what they can do and they can't do.
Well, you can go back and maybe put a rider on what you've already approved or on, on the first thing that the housing authority get. I don't know.
Allison, can you correct Michael? There's a misconception of what this body can do and cannot do in this particular instance. Could you just clarify?
This is a financing by the California Municipal Financing Authority, and it's between that entity and.
And Kensington.
And Kensington 2.
Correct.
For the development of Kensington 2's project. We, we don't get to condition this project.
Right.
At, at this time with this approval.
That's why I'm saying stand subject, because it's important that you understand that we can't do that. Our jurisdiction only reaches so far. It's a great idea. We'll talk to them and say, you know, try and help our veterans out first, but we cannot condition it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. David Paul. David, welcome back.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. I rise to lend my support and my approval for this project. I'll tell you, these are strange times we live in. You talk about the pensions going away, and there are just a multitude of problems, and it is so good for me to come here and see how our city works. I went down, I live on 15th West and drive 20th West, and there were some potholes. I thought I should just call the city and get them to fix them. I went by the next day, they're done. So thank you for that. Rhonda, thank you for the parks and the building, the community, and all these things that are so important to people. We have to stick together. That's what we have. We have this great city that actually works. You know, the Kensington thing is a victory. I'm glad that the Salvation Army is, is, is running the homeless shelter and doing good things. I've heard good things. I've also gone to all those meetings, and I've looked at where this Measure H money has gone to, and I don't know, other than that, what help has been put forward with this money for the homeless. It's a problem, but a community that works on it and has something to show, some innovative way to do it, you know, the world changes, right? It's all up to us. I, I remember back to a movie I saw about the Japanese attack on Pearl Harbor and FDR getting up out of his chair and wanting some action. And we used to have the mural of Jimmy Doolittle who went out, and these men went out on a mission. They didn't know if they would even return, but we had to strike back. And Kensington is what, that is to me, a striking back at the problem. It's effective, we're getting something done, and that makes me cheer to know that we're actually doing something. So thank you so much for that. I appreciate everything that goes on, and I really appreciated the laughs tonight. You know, you think about how things change. The Japanese, the Imperial Japanese committed a lot of atrocities during the war, and they were our enemy. Now they're our great ally that we have to stick with. They represent democracy, the G7. Those are countries that have self-government, and that's the difference between an Imperial Japan and a democratic nation. When people have an investment in their community and an actual stake, we perform better, we feel better. feel better, and we will do better. So thank you so much for everything you do. It was uplifting to come here and hear the laughter and the joy and fun in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We have no other speaker cards. I'm going to close the public hearing. I need a motion in a second.
A motion that we
Go ahead.
Adopt Resolution one-eight dash two-nine?
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Vote is three-zero. Mayor Paris abstaining and laughing in the background. We weren't bothering you, were we?
Yeah, as a matter of fact.
All right. Did he take care of everybody? He didn't insult anybody? You did, didn't you? I did. But you were gone. All right. So what are we on now? CA one. CA one. We're going to defer that to the next meeting. Council reports. Council reports? I would like to start, if possible, talking about the AVTA and what they've done and the progress that they've made, and our mayor to the south's comments about the AVTA and it being a toxic board. Of course it's a toxic board. He's on it. He's not on it.
No.
We—well, that's—he brought up—in—
That's right, his own council took him off.
Yes, his council took him off.
So I guess he's upset.
Well, no, he brought up a situation that happened six, seven years ago with the past executive director that was caught doing different things. You remember what it was?
Yeah, in fact, Marvin—
Not the guy that had child pornography on his computer?
Yeah, and they were using—
Accused of that?
Right. Using money, AVTA money, for outside personal interests, you know, employees. I think somebody went to the Philippines. Another young lady had some reconstructive surgery, from my understanding.
So what was—what was Ledford's comments about this? It was a toxic board in that Norm Hickling and myself should be held responsible for it being a toxic board over there at— Check his computer, would you? Yeah. Rex is on it. It being a toxic board. And what I'm trying to let everyone understand is everyone gets certain airtime, and to take a shot—and in my opinion, a cheap shot—at AVTA to try to defer his own problems and get everybody else thinking about an executive director's problem that had child pornography, had—they were buying things over at AVTA that they shouldn't have been. The finance director went to the Philippines, had a funeral service for a friend and paid for by AVTA. We stopped all that over at AVTA, and Mayor Ledford supported it. So the purpose of me talking about this is do not let his deferral of his own problems into—and try to bring up something that happened five, six years ago that we took care of, that was a problem, and he supported the individuals that were there. I just think that's disgusting. When did he bring this up? At his council meeting. Did you guys report it? They're going to report it now. Well, they should report it. They should report it. They can quote me that I think he's disgusting, and he should resign.
Yeah. Yeah, I just think it's a deflection. That's all.
Aren't you going to wait for him to get convicted? I think he's done enough harm to the city of Palmdale as it is. If it takes you a year and a half to decide whether you're guilty, I think that tells the individuals a lot—a lot. Anything else?
No. Disappointing, though.
It's very disappointing. It's—I mean, it's—the AVTA is recognized as the top transit board in the nation right now. Everybody is coming to us and asking us how we've done it, what we're doing. We've received, you know, a hundred and nineteen million dollars in grants since he's been gone. It's just—it's bad that one would use that to deflect his own problems. So did you guys get a new executive director? We did. Okay, and it was Macy? It is Macy. It is—and people are asking why we hired Macy. Macy is the individual that ran BYD. What better individual to run your fleet of electric buses than the individual that actually purchased the buses? I met Macy for the first time—it was about five or six years ago—in Washington DC when the deputy city manager and me went back there, and he was back there in a transportation issues. He's well-known in the transportation industry. He's well-qualified, and he'll do a great job. Good. Okay, anything else? So I met with—what's Mr. Nichols' first name?
Brandon.
Brandon Nichols, who's number two in Department of Children's Services. And for the first time in thirty years, I was blown away by DCSF. He's got some great ideas. One of them is to partner up with the churches and our neighborhood impact in our, you know, neighborhood wellness homes, and start focusing on a foster care program that keeps the child in the neighborhood that he's from, so that he doesn't lose contact with his—you know, usually it's the mother, so that he doesn't lose contact with her. Well, that process is in play. And Daryl Doris met with him with me. Were you as impressed as I was?
I was very impressed with him, especially with the feeling that he had of trying to keep families together and trying to make sure that whatever they do is for the betterment of the child.
I was just blown away.
And make sure they just don't tear families apart, so, yeah.
You're really accomplishing something there. The—and I want the city to work with him in every way possible, and let's give it a year and see how this thing comes to fruition. But he was impressive. It was an exciting day, just because of that meeting, that you could see the—I mean, rarely do you get that level of creativity in that position, and it was—it was great. Thank you.
Maybe we could use that in—for DACA and problems for the immigration in the future, that if there's a problem while they're in custody, we could at least keep them.
One step at a time. The other person I met with was the new guy, Peter, the guy in charge of Lhasa, and that's another home run. I mean, you know, for anybody to be able to turn me around on Lhasa in a relatively short period of time. I mean, this guy was really smart. He really had a handle on, you know, the—how—the boundaries that he has to work in and what he has to accomplish in those boundaries, and I was encouraged. That's somebody you should get to know. Although, the—you know what it is? Is you got an all-new board. And, you know, I don't know how to say this, but they're women. It's different. The people they're hiring are different. The approach is different. It's much more problem-solving than I have ever seen it before, rather than territorial. I'm—anyway. It's a good thing, and I want the city to do whatever they can do to further those programs. All right. Thank you. What else we got? Anything?
City clerk.
City clerk.
Manager.
Oh, manager. You got something for us?
We have three things, relatively quick. Number one, I want to thank Jeff and his staff for quickly responding to the direction of council on a temporary walkway on Sierra Highway that Mr. Green brought up a couple months ago. They did it, they have something temporary there. It's much safer before the permanent goes in, about a year and a half, and really was very thankful. Mr. Green took the time to call and wanted to thank the mayor and city council for listening and doing that.
We ought to get a picture of Mr. Green out there and put it on the website, because this was citizen-motivated, generated, and—all right?
That's a really good idea. Okay, we'll do that. Number two, we had a Celebrate America With Thunder celebration on Friday. It was a lot of fun. There were over fifteen thousand people there, a bunch of cars, and just a really good time and very patriotic event. So we really appreciate that, appreciate the support of council. Lastly, a couple weeks ago, we had a gala at Elpac, and it was wonderful, because it was a seventies theme, meaning that I didn't have to buy a costume. We just went into the closet.
Obviously didn't take it off, either.
As I was saying, the—we forget sometimes, when we have a lot of fun at these galas and stuff, that these are put on by community leaders who volunteer their time to raise money. They raised over seventy thousand dollars for the Arts and Youth Program, which sends thousands of kids to live theater performances every year who would not get to go to those performances, and it truly changes those kids' life. And you see it years later when they get scholarships. So really, the community leaders that volunteer their time, Todd Porter and his group, and Stephen Derryberry as president, don't get enough credit. So we have a short video to sort of show what they do.
The Lancaster Performing Arts Center opened in November of nineteen ninety-one. Since that time, more than four hundred thousand students have attended Arts for Youth performances through the financial support of the Elpac Foundation, which provides programming support, ticket scholarships, and transportation assistance.
I don't know where we would be without Elpac. It is the center of the arts community in the Antelope Valley.
It's about getting the youth involved in arts, trying to get people involved with different elements, and I think this is really where they all come to fruition. This is where the magic happens.
Students from across the Antelope Valley and as far away as Barstow, Ridgecrest, and Lake Los Angeles have enjoyed the Arts for Youth programming here at Elpac.
Most of them were under the impression we were coming to a movie theater for the theater part, so I think that there's another form of theater. It was just a completely different experience for them, so it was great to see theater live.
Many young people aren't exposed to the arts. There's less and less art in school, so bringing them here to the theater and letting them experience a live performance, so important, because many of them don't have the opportunity to see it otherwise.
Unfortunately for the Pappos, fresh fish was baited.
My favorite part about the play was, I liked the girl Penguin, and the baby's girl were cute.
One can easily see the impact that the Elpac Foundation has on the community when you come to an Arts for Youth performance. Students walk out saying that they've never seen anything like that in their lives.
In 2016, the foundation began awarding scholarships to high school seniors, providing them with opportunities to pursue their passion for the performing arts.
With the support of the foundation, we've been allowed to take master classes with really incredible companies, making it more wonderful for the audiences.
With the support of our patrons and our donors and our board of directors, we're able to bring these opportunities to our community. And so without the support of our stakeholders, none of this would be possible.
Thank you for allowing my students to experience this. I know we're going to go back and put on puppet theaters, and there's just a passion, because it's actually something tangible to them now. They saw what it can become, and that's just a world of possibilities for them. So thank you for that and adding more passion to their learning.
Elpac is located in the heart of the community. We're a part of the Boulevard Cultural District. We have a lot of great, exciting things coming in the next years, and we are looking at new innovative ways to engage our community.
That was good. Anything else? Where are we on putting the cameras on the boulevard?
I have to get back to you. Part of what's in the budget is security enhancements, which I believe that first place is the boulevard, but we'll get back to you on a timeline.
I was reading about a city in Europe that has that system in place, but they open it to the public on the internet. So you have all of these volunteer watchers. Now, I can see a downside to it in that—well, you can see a downside, but the upside might counterbalance it. So if somebody could look at that?
He certainly will.
I mean, what good is it to have cameras if nobody's watching them? But you crowdsource it, is what you do. Just a thought. It's not a recommendation. All right?
Okay, we'll get back to you with the timeline.
Great, thank you. City clerk?
This is the time to address the City Council Agency and Authority on Non-Agenda Matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Who do we got? Anybody? Michael Reeves, again?
Mayor Paris, council, ladies and gentlemen. Well, we have Fourth of July coming up, and you know what that means. That means fireworks are going to go off in Lancaster.
I thought it meant the birth of our country, but who am I?
Couple of years ago, the sheriff's department put out a policy that if we come out, we're not going to cite you, we're going to take you to jail. I am asking the council to ask the sheriff's department to have that policy this year, that if they come out, they're going to arrest you, because it's just an intolerable situation. If you live in the center of town, you can turn on the air conditioning, you can do whatever you can, but the gunpowder in the air, you can smell, and it's just an intolerable situation for you and your animals. Now, my church is going to go to the Jet Hawk Stadium on July fourth. I can't go, because I got to stay home and take care of my pets, because the idiots in the neighborhood are going to be shooting off fireworks. And if I call the sheriff's department, they may or may not come out. But if they put the policy out that if we come out, we're going to take you to jail, it might do something. A couple years ago, it did, and the neighborhood was quiet as the mouse. Thank you.
Michael, I'm not asking the sheriff's department to take my grandchildren to jail. I mean, to be honest. Fred?
Again, good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council members, everybody here, thank you, and the council. Anyway, I just want to share something nice with you. The Little Rock Dam Recreation Area, which I'm on the board, we opened last week for a trial run, okay? The Friends of Little Rock Dam in Los Angeles and the forest and the National Forest and the Palmdale Water District, we collaborated together, and we opened the dam, the Little Rock Dam Lake, last weekend on a trial, and we're going to open again this coming week on Saturday and Sunday. We're trying to get the people back enthused about the dam being open. Right now, it's—this is just temporary, because the Palmdale Water District has to do some mitigation, testing the area there, but it is coming to pass. I think it will—should be open by next—fully open, God willing, by next—the next season, next year. But we had a real good turnout. We were—I wasn't taking names and so forth. In two hours, we had over three hundred and fifty people show up. And so I'll be in line again this coming weekend, and we welcome everybody to come and join us and come and have some fun. Right now, you can't really go swimming yet. You can go fishing if you like, but there's no—no fishing—I mean, there's no swimming or anything in the water yet. There is—if there's any, you can picnic-ing, and if there's anybody interested in mud bogging—I just learned what that was. That's when those big trucks come with their big wheels and go through the mud and throw mud all over the place. But anyway, it was fun, but I just wanted to share that with you. I thank you very much, and this is a great thing, because I remember this—what got me interested in this— me interested in this was 20 years ago when I moved here. I went there on a, just when I was, I wasn't in a chair then, and I found this place by mistake, actually. I was just right in the hills, and I fell in love with it. And then when I heard it was closing, or it had closed a few years ago, that's when I got involved with the members there, and I'm glad it's going to reopen, because we need a place for our kids to go to recreate. There's no place for the parents to go for a picnic, take their kids. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's it. Lancaster Financing Authority, no action. No action on the Power Authority. You've already made your announcements, is that right?
Mayor, we don't want to forget that a week ago, it was Mark's birthday. Rhonda was so polite to remind us. I think that we ought to stop and acknowledge that Mark is now an officially rubber-stamped senior citizen, and happy birthday to you, Mark.
How old are you now?
I would have joined your '60s club now, you and Marvin and Ken, but I'm the youngest member, by far.
That wasn't very polite.
I think he was referring to who, specifically, he was talking about you, though. I think he was referencing that you were the oldest member.
You're the oldest, I call you.
Oh, oh, okay.
These two have a playoff, who's the oldest. You know, I had an upsetting experience today. It really was. I'm out at Lancaster Baptist, and I'm looking for a parking space, and I'm driving around, and there's a sign, Senior Citizen Parking, and I realized that was for me. So I parked, but he said, Ken has his own place to park. Okay. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 26, 2018, 5:00 p.m. Carol, my day is done, and I am coming home. And be nice to me, because they've been abusing me all evening.